Okay, are we ready to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay, so the Planning and Zoning Commissioner called special session meeting to order Thursday, November 12, 2012 at 6:33 PM. There is a quorum present, do we need to take role?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay.
Chairperson Chiong. Absent. Vice Chair Leonard.
Absent. Commissioner Hammer Smith.
Hey.
Commissioner Rowe.
Here.
Commissioner Cardona.
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
And Commissioner Small.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now we have a quorum present, we will move into our public comments. Comments will be taken from the audience to participate in our Zoom on non-agenda items related topics for a length of time, not to exceed more than three minutes per person on a specific agenda item. There are three public hearing items on agenda for tonight. The first one is to conduct a public hearing on rezoning requests for lot 1 block A Cottonwood Estates and being 1.3 acres more or less and being located at 15501 US Highway 290 East Elgin, Texas, from agricultural to medium commercial C2. Are there any public hearing comments?
There are no comments for this public hearing item. I gave some background on it, like, so this property, it's like, I believe, a Shell gas station on 290 heading towards Elgin. It was annexed back in 2017 and the default zoning after annexation is agricultural. Obviously, the zoning doesn't match the use, and so it's a technically a non-conforming use right now. And so the property owner is looking to get some permits to potentially have a food truck at the service station as well as sign permits. And those, those are based on the zoning. And so we recommended that they apply for medium commercial, which is basically a highway zoning, a C2 zoning. And that way their, their use is conforming and they can continue to operate as a service station and get the permits they need or are requesting. And yeah, that's the background on that one. And if you have any questions, I can answer those too.
Are there any questions? Well, I did notice that the, it does have an Elgin, Texas address. So this is still under the city of Maynor jurisdiction.
Yeah, this is getting to the part of 290 that's in Elgin's zip code. And so it's, it's obviously still our city limits, we still have all of our city controls there, just an elegant address.
And then just to make sure, another question for a medium commercial C2 that falls under a gas station type entity.
Hmm, yes.
Thank you. Okay. If no questions, I'll accept the motion for public hearing item number one.
Motion for to close the public hearing on agenda item number one.
I second.
So we have a first motion by Commissioner Hammer Smith and a second by Rowe. All oppose or all agree?
All right, let me run through the list here. Commissioner Hammer Smith.
Hey.
Commissioner Rowe.
Hi.
Commissioner Cardona.
Hi.
Commissioner Small.
I.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Sorry.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay, so thank you, motion passed. Moving on to public hearing item number two, to conduct a public hearing on rezoning requests for lot 1 block T Presidential Heights, Phase 4, and being 1.341 acres more or less and being located at the northeast corner of Samuel Welch Way in George Mason Avenue, Maynor, Texas, from single family to light commercial.
So I'll give some background on this one first, and then the developer is going to add a little bit to that as well. So this property, it is pretty much in the center of Presidential Heights. It is on their, the two main roads that go through the subdivision. It's across the street from their amenity center. And back in 2007, I think is when they started being contemplated, or at least that's when the exhibit is from. But in their 2009 revised and restated development agreement for what is Presidential Glen and Presidential Heights, it's under one development agreement. It was contemplated on their land use plan that this tract would be zoned commercial. And so the development agreement didn't bind y'all or future council to approve that. It was just that the developer would make a request for C1 light commercial on a tract similar to where it is now. And so that's what the developers doing, they're following through with what the development agreement says. Staff's recommendation, though, is for neighborhood business, if you're so inclined. Because y'all can recommend any less intense category and neighborhood business is a less intense commercial use than C1. In your backup, I provided kind of a breakdown of the, the non-residential land uses. And so I highlighted the differences between neighborhood business and C1. And they're, they're kind of pretty much the same, but things like, you know, auto mechanic shops aren't allowed in neighborhood business. Bars need a special permit, hotels would need a special permit. So neighborhood business, it was essentially created back, I mean, a little bit before 2009, I think it was in 2007 when that zone was established, to be a commercial zone that is within or adjacent to residential, specifically a single-family residential. And so the uses are supposed to be supportive of the neighborhood. And so it's sort of small format retail, professional services, offices, it's like a barber shop, a convenience store. Uses that would benefit the neighborhood and not, you know, potentially detract from the property values of the adjacent homes. And the development standards are also consistent with what residential is. And so like the lot coverage, like the building coverage in neighborhood business is 40% or C1 at 60%. So you can have larger buildings unlike commercial versus neighborhood business. And so on a residential zone, the lot coverage is 40%, so it's the same. So neighborhood business and residential both have 40% lot coverage. Neighborhood business, the max height is 35 feet, that's the same in a residential zone. So you get businesses that are scaled to the adjacent communities and it's not overwhelming them. So that's why staff is recommending a neighborhood business. When we get to that item, this is obviously the public hearing portion. But we are recommending that. And then just before we jump in with the developer, we did receive one public comment from a adjacent resident, Ms. Sarah Cole, which I've provided to y'all earlier. And she was in support of the neighborhood business as opposed to the C1. I don't know if you had a chance to read through that, but basically the gist of it was they were supportive of staff's recommendation for neighborhood business. With that, I guess we'll bring the developer and then can ask any questions if you have it.
Yes, I did get a chance to read over it. Thank you for sending it and thank you for the, for the public, public comment on this topic.
Let me, I'm gonna grab the developer and then he'll provide some additional comments.
Do we need to do that as a public hearing or the agenda item?
This is the public hearing, so he'll speak here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Hey, Danny, are you here?
Howdy, yes, I am.
Sure. So I don't know if you're watching live, but I gave the commissioner rundown of staff's recommendations. I didn't know if you wanted to provide any additional feedback.
I apologize, I wasn't actually watching it live, oops.
No worries.
If it's okay with everyone, I'd just like to give just a quick rundown of the history of why we're asking for what we're asking. Scott may have already repeated this, and if so, I'll try to make it very brief. You're probably aware that the Presidential Glen Development had a development agreement. As part of that development agreement, there was a series of annexations and a series of zonings that were planned. This commercial lot, which is being proposed, this 1.3 acre lot, was one of those parcels as part of the development agreement that said at some point the developer will request this zoning for C1. Since the development agreement, we perfected a concept plan for Presidential Heights. On that concept plan, it showed the commercial lot as well that was submitted, reviewed and approved. Subsequent to that, we had a preliminary plan that we submitted that showed the commercial lot as well. That was submitted, reviewed, approved. And then subsequent to that, we had a final plat and that showed the commercial lot. So we're, we're at a point now where we're just ready, we have the absorption in the community to support the, hopefully, the beginning stages of the commercial lot. Our intent is to not have a high-intensity use commercial development. It's really intended to be something to service the residents within Presidential Heights and the adjoining communities, Stonewater, Presidential Meadows, as it may be, that maybe the family needs to get out and get a loaf of bread or go get a slushy and, or, you know, a gallon, half a gallon of milk. They don't have to get in the car, get out on 290 and drive it down the street. That's the ultimate goal. We're still not at the absorption threshold to support that level of commercial development. However, we do believe that there's an opportunity for another activity, and that is to have a venue, a dedicated space that would support food trucks and food trailers. And Scott and I have talked about that and either the C1 can't support more than three, I believe, is that correct, Scott? Two? We have two, you have no more than two. That's correct. And so our request is we could have a C1 zoning, but our intent is to have a dedicated space, have hookups, water, electric, so that food trailers or food trucks could be there, you know, Johnny's Philly Cheese Steaks or, you know, Korean cravings place that does bulgogi would be there for the residents. And that is, that's the intent. Ironically, and earlier this week, I've had a HOA meeting with our residents. We had numerous questions about this and, which is great. I mean, that's the point of doing the notices. I had an opportunity to talk to them and hopefully address some of their concerns. I'm sure there are people that will have more concerns about what's the activity, hours of operation, lights, and noise, et cetera. And all of that is ultimately addressed, you know, as we go through our zoning and then ultimately site development plans that come through for the ultimate development. So with that, I'm, I'm willing to accept staff's recommendation of the neighborhood business. Does that also allow the opportunity for us to have two food trucks or food trailers?
It doesn't. Yeah, we don't permit food trucks, neighborhood business or downtown business properties because
Okay.
that zoning technically also allows for residential and a mixed-use building. And so we don't, as policy, permit food trucks on properties that have commercial uses.
So that's, that's where we, we would, with that being said, I actually can't support, I guess, staff's recommendation for neighborhood business. And we, we do request the C1 zoning. It is, right now, we have food trucks that are coming into the community and they're parking in the streets or parking in the center. We're trying to provide a better location. And so while I understand the desire to have a less intense zoning classification, we're not intending to have a highly intense zoning class or at least the ultimate land use. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'll stop talking and let you discuss. And if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to address those questions. And I guess, Scott, how do I go back? If I want to hear what's going on, I'm sorry, I, I have been out here in the dark and I thought you were just maybe going to start.
I mean, you, you can stay here until, so they can ask you questions and then
Okay.
once I go to move back, so.
Okay.
So is that pretty set in stone, your plan for food trucks? You already have them lined up or do you have other businesses lined up that you can only do with a C1? And if so, like, how many jobs is that bringing or how much in sales tax dollars to the city?
Sure. It's a good question. We do have food vendors that are quitting our community now. And so there's, the, the good, bad news about COVID is that it's required or challenged companies to step up and be innovative in the way that they're conducting business. And we're seeing food trucks that, and food trailers that are visiting our residents. They, they can't get out as much. And so it's a, it's a successful opportunity for both the vendors and for the community. The ultimate use is that our company, Dwyer Realty Companies, has had a relationship with a local convenience store and general store developer, Mr. Ed Awad. And he has developed a series of the more prominent fueling locations in the city of Maynor. The Texaco and Chevrons on US 290 is your entering Maynor. The Texaco that's out in front of Presidential Meadows. And he has a desire to help us. We have opportunities to bring in, I think, a quality facility. I hope that you have seen by the character of our commercial development that we've had on 290 that we take pride in our work, so it would not be something that would be tracked in or a nuisance. I wish I had been prepared to answer some of your questions about what the actual sales tax is that comes off a store like this. I'd say possibly the, the number of employees is probably 10. You know, you maybe have more five full-time and five part-time employees. It's, you know, it's not, it's not a huge operation.
And if they, if the zoning commission did go with the city's recommendation, you know, what's your fallback plan? Are you gonna just wait on development or?
I think we would come back, it's a good question too. I think we would re-engage with the city of Maynor and ask why the change now? We, we haven't changed anything that we've done in our program per the development agreement and any of our, our planning. Maybe at the time when Maynor's zoning ordinances were established, you know, back in 2009, I'm not even sure that there was a neighborhood business classification. Scott, do you know?
I think that classification came about when this, like in 2006 or '07, probably when the land plan was being worked out. So I don't know, maybe it didn't find its way into it as a viable.
It might have, it might have been in place. But the, if you were to look at the, the actual development agreement, it specifically shows that the intended zoning is C1. And that's what was considered, and you know, Scott and I have talked about, you can't contract zone. However, we have proceeded forward with everything that we said we would do. And we're not trying to create something, again, that's a nuisance. We're just trying to find an appropriate zoning classification that will allow us to move forward with the vision of the development agreement and to be able to service our residents.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of the food trucks. You know, I think a lot of the residents are, are starting to ask questions and wonder about jobs, about tax dollars to start putting in sidewalks and things like that. So you know, if it's gonna be like a medical office or another gas station.
No, no. Yeah, and I, it won't be that type. I wish, you know, I wish I could say it's gonna be a huge tax generator. It's Tesla's baby brother that's gonna be there, but you know, that's not it. And it's not, it's, it is, it really is a place to go and get, get a loaf of bread and, you know, get a, you know, golly, I ran out of the head of lettuce or, you know, grab a burger and, you know, get a payday, you know, candy bar or something like that. It's a, it's a place that's meant to service the residents.
Oh, that's possible under neighborhood business?
That, you're right, that is, the, the problem is, is that right now we don't have the absorption for that. And so maybe a better question is, if we got it neighborhood, neighborhood business, is there a way for us to do interim use on that site to have food trucks and food trailers, provide designated hookups with hours of operation? Yeah, so that's, that's the rub. So then there, we're out in the street and we're running generators. And that's, that, that doesn't seem appropriate. It's not, it's not the best view. So we, while I, I don't disagree with the neighborhood business part and in general, Scott and the commissioners from the intensity side, it's just, it's that interim use that we're, we're looking at. And it's something that we've, we've thought about, we think it's valuable. And that's just what we're looking for, your, your discretion. And I don't know if there's a way to do it, can you do a conditional overlay? I apologize for being ignorant on what is possible, what's not.
Yes and no, that's the answer. They've, it's been done like once or twice, but we really don't like doing it because it, it gets messy down the road. About this property's own C1, but really it's everything developed under neighborhood business plus food trailers. And then it's, it becomes on the city to remember like 10 years from now, when the development comes in, but it's not actually zone C1, you know, it has this special overlay on it.
Right, right.
We don't entertain those so much. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, so we, again, we're just, we're just trying to follow the path that we've laid out and we've been following for, I guess, since 2009. And I guess if it is the, the commission's desire to not approve the C1, we'll have to reconvene and ask, just figure out how, how or why not.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns?
I got one.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Burnett, I'm kind of looking at the map right here on this property and a little over one acre. So if you were to put in like this C store, this corner mark, neighborhood market, which I think is a good idea, is the land, are you gonna have to put in a retention pond or anything like that? It just seems kind of small, I guess, is my only concern.
That's a great question. If, are you looking at Google Earth by any chance or?
I'm looking at the map provided on the issue here.
Um, Scott, possible, is it allowable for me to share a document?
Um, no.
If not, I, I don't mean.
I know it's not.
So if you were to.
Yeah.
If, if, and Scott can attest, I do, we do lots of meetings and I'm a visual guy, Google Earth is my thing. On this lot, behind it is a very large detention facility. And when we constructed that phase of development, it was sized to handle that detention. So
I think I see.
it won't be that far.
I think I do see that on the map here, the little area there, so that is a retention pond right behind it.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you were to go out there now, there's actually been very substantial improvements that have taken place in just the past couple of months. And it's, it's all being re-vegetated, it looks quite different even from the, the most recent Google imagery. And there's, there is sites, we work with some of the, we hope, we think that there's some of the better architects in the area, Levy Architects, they'll help us site plan a facility and for the ultimate facility. And again, you know, we'd be interested in making sure that we had proper placement for, for the interim use to make sure that the facilities are located to not cause the disturbance with the, at inappropriate hours for our residents. Again, it's, it's, we're, we're trying to do it for them. And it's, it's only gonna succeed if they're happy and they want it.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have a question too. Yeah, I've, on the neighborhood business, or not, actually, C1, if we started out with food trucks there, what is to prevent a different type of business from ending up there afterwards?
It's a good question as well. And it is our intent, sir, that the initial use would be just a placeholder for the food trucks and that ultimately we would have a general store, light intense commercial facility that would be constructed. Again, our goal is to limit that use to a, a general store facility. Not, it's not intended to be heavy commercials, not intended to have gas pumps. It's not intended to have late hours of operation. It is a, it's a facility that's generated just for the community. But I don't know the answer to your question about how you limit what could go afterwards.
Nothing's a, like, good point too, like, I've mentioned before that the difference of the land uses in the exhibit that was in y'all's backup. And so I ran through it, I mean, bars are allowed by right in C1, indoor amusement, which is, includes like music venues and dance halls and bowling alleys.
Offsite accessory parking, is that like RV parking?
Offsite accessory parking is, say, the amenity center across the street needed more parking, they could turn this lot into a parking lot. And then as, if the use is adjacent, they can do it. And then it also allows for commercial off-street parking, which is paid parking, which couldn't imagine going there, but it, you know, that's allowed. Communication service facilities, which is like TV studios and that type of stuff. Food preparation, which is, you know, commercial kitchens. Neighborhood business actually allows office uses, so things like medical clinics and professional offices, which C1 doesn't. So that one's actually a little different.
Commercial off-street parking with a smaller lot like that, if you do put, if it gets rezoned to C1 and you put food trucks, are you gonna have parking for people there or is it more of a, you're not gonna have a parking lot and you're, it's kind of like a walk-up? Like people from the neighborhood just walk up and grab a taco?
Yes, sir. Good question as well. It's intended to be a walk-up for residents, ride your bike over. I do see people probably on the way home, you know, honey, can you stop by? And, you know, Johnny's Cheese Steaks and picks up, they pull in, they park along Samuel Welch or park at the mini center, walk over. If the, the actual, the interim use is intended, you know, I could see it have, you know, a permeable material like a mulch or flex base that's down, have, have your park benches, your umbrella shades out. You know, kind of what you see downtown, where if you're, if you're downtown Austin, you know, from time to time and you see a, a food court venue. But it's, again, we're talking now just to, at a, at a time that would possibly be allowed.
So the, the requirements for food trucks are more stringent than they may appear. Because you're actually supposed to have parking, either your own service parking or shared parking with the use. So like, you know, when they locate on gas stations, they share the parking. All of the food trucks, or the majority of food trucks here in the older part of town that you see on Parsons or wherever, they all got waivers from city council to, for, to not put that parking in. So they got site development waivers. And it's, it's been indicated to me that And it's, it's been indicated to me that council is no longer in favor of those, so. If they wanted to develop it in a similar manner without parking, um, they'd have to get a site waiver through city council.
Okay, that's not a problem either. One is, we, the site is large enough that and we have the professional capabilities to construct parking on site. As ample room.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing or any other questions?
Uh, I'll put a motion for it to close the public hearing on agenda item number two.
I give that motion.
I'm gonna try to log back on.
What's that?
I'm gonna try to log back on so I can watch the rest of the uh, the planning and zoning meeting.
Okay, I'll put you in the waiting room or if I see you come back in, but.
Okay, cool.
Comes up for a vote.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Okay, thank you. So it's been properly moved to um. To close agenda item number two, so can we do a tally of those in favor?
Alright. Uh, Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving along, uh, still within our public hearing, we have our third agenda item. To conduct a public hearing on a rezoning request for lots eleven through twenty, block twelve ten. Town of Maynor in being zero point six six acres, more or less, and being located along the two hundred block. West Burton Street, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial C one to multifamily twenty-five MF dash two.
Um, so some of y'all may be familiar with the um, small apartment building across from the Cat Metro Parking Room. Here in the older part of town, um, I believe that's thirty-three units. It's a affordable senior housing that is. Owned and run by the Housing Authority of Chaussee County. That authority, they own the other half of that block. And so this is their request to rezone that other half to um, multifamily twenty-five. And they recently um, council authorized the vacation and conveyance of the alley to them. So that they'll own the whole block. Um, there'll be a public utility easement across the alley, but um. It allows them to plat the alley as part of their property. And so this rezoning encompasses the alley, but um, they're looking to do, I mean, this is. But they'll submit separate from this, but um, twenty uh, affordable senior units on the property. But they need the MF twenty-five zoning to achieve that twenty unit acreage, because it is a, a smaller tract, being a half, half lot or half block. But staff recommends it, um, it will be adjacent to the future Cat Metro Railline when the green line eventually comes out this way. So it provides that density and accessibility that is transit supportive.
So um, do we have any public hearing?
Uh, there were no uh, public comments on this one.
Okay, any uh, questions from the commissioners? Okay, if not, I'll take a, a motion um, to close public hearing for our agenda item number three.
Motion to close agenda item number two, number three.
It has been properly moved to close agenda item number three. Uh, can we have a tally of all those in favor or opposed?
Uh, Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Hi. Great, thank you, Scott. So moving along into our consent agenda. For agenda item number four, um, we have a consideration discussion. And possible action to approve planning and zoning commissioner minutes. Uh, there were actually three copies of minutes of the three pa- previous minutes in your package. Uh, one for September ninth, twenty twenty, our regular session. The next uh, October meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty of our regular session. And then they called a special section, session that we had on October twenty-first of twenty twenty.
Were there any questions or corrections needed for the minutes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a motion for it to approve the minutes agenda item number four.
Okay, we have a first motion. Do we have a second?
A second, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, thank you. So it's been properly moved to accept the minutes from the last three meetings to be properly uh, accepted as read. Uh, can we have a tally for those that are all in favor or opposed?
Uh, Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So moving into our rela- regular agenda item. We have for um, agenda item number five. Consideration and discussion and possible action on a rezoning request for lot one block eight, Patonwood Estates. And being one point three acres more or less and being located at one five five zero one US Highway. Two ninety in Elgin, Texas, from agricultural to medium commercial.
So this is just the, the gas station that's rezoned yet conforming zoning with their use.
Yeah, you said that, that just happened automatically whenever it was annexed, correct?
The agricultural zoning, yes.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a motion first and second to approve uh, the could, moving the. From agricultural to commercial for agenda item number five.
Alright, um, I'll put the vocal, uh, Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. For uh, uh, agenda item number six is consideration and discussion and possible action. On rezoning request for lot one block T Presidential Heights Phase Four. In being one point three four one acres more or less. And being located at the northeast corner or Samuel Welch Way in George Mason Avenue. Maynor, Texas, from single family to light commercial.
Yep, that's one right. I had a lengthy discussion on, uh, staff recommends neighborhood business and um. And if you have further questions, developer still here to answer them if you like.
Okay, so do we have a motion to take any action?
So I guess if we were to do the neighborhood business instead of the C one, could he still do that general store and just not the food truck? Okay.
And what, what prevents um, the, the food trucks like it, the, um. Neighborhood business doesn't allow like electric water hookups for.
It's a neighborhood business along with downtown business, downtown business district. Uh, also allows for um, residential as part of a mixed-use building. And so theoretically, someone on this property, if it were his own neighborhood business, could do. You know, two-story building where there's retail on the first floor and apartments on the second floor. And as a, as a policy, we don't do um. Food vendors, semi-permanent food vendors, uh, food trucks on properties with residential. And so neighborhood business and downtown business districts are not allowed, so we just stick to C one, C two, or C three, which are just straight commercial districts.
Okay. Um, any other questions or uh, action, possible actions?
How easy is it for them if we chose to go with the recommended um, for them to? Bump that up to C one? If, if it was, you know, them saying, well, we're just not gonna develop it at this time. Cause you know, i- it would be good for the neighborhood to have more choices for. Food truck or a restaurant or um. You know, potential jobs um, and the, the sales tax revenue. But you know, like you said, food trucks are semi-temporary. You know, versus like, say, a Casa Garcia.
Right, yeah, so if, if it does reason to neighborhood business and in the future they want to change to C one, they would, they would go to the same process right now. So it, it wouldn't be like prohibited, they just have to go through the process again. And th- there's other locations nearby for food trucks, all of two ninety is on C two.
Do we know, like, if the HOA has any input as far as what type of business is put in the neighborhood?
That I'm not familiar with. Um, I don't know that the HOA has. I'm not familiar with their restrictions. We can only enforce our city restrictions. Um, if the HOA has anything stricter. They didn't reach out to us. Um, as the developer said, they were at the last HOA meeting and discussed what they were proposing, so.
So I would love to hear if there are any comments uh, as far as. As far as what was going on as far as in the HOA meeting, as far as from the residents. As far as what they had to say about it, what was the consistent um, message of that?
Yeah, let me, I'll bring him in and he can let you know how to meet him on. Hey, Danny?
Howdy.
Hey. I'm not sure if you're watching the Facebook this time, I know.
Yeah, I figured out how to watch it, sorry.
Okay, yeah, but I know there's a delay too, so it's probably all something like.
Let me. Do you?
Yeah.
Do you want me to pause one? See here. Let me.
We can hear you fine, so.
I'm gonna turn off my mic on YouTube, okay? Can you hear me now, it's just fine?
Yep, no problem.
Okay, I heard the question about the HOA. Okay, I did, yes, sir. Uh, so um, ironically, I am the HOA. Uh, so uh, the way the, the way the communities work, uh, when the developer originally creates um, a development. Uh, we established the governance documents, the CCNR Design Guidelines, master covenants. And we established board and um, I'm a board member and um, also what's known as the detriment. Uh, the detriment means that we're in control of the HOA until we hit a certain percentage and we convey it, so um. Uh, we have the right as the HOA to establish certain restrictions if we wanted to. That might help cover a gap between what the city can and can't do. Um, I will say that the residents uh, asked very good questions. They're concerned about increased, increased traffic, they were concerned about vandalism, they were concerned about. Um, crime, uh, security and um, my. I, I try not to have, make it sound as if I have an answer for everything. Uh, however, I, I, I felt that I was able to uh, answer the concerns. I'm sure there were some residents that walked away like, yeah, I believe it when I see it. And that ultimately is, that's kind of my job, is to bring that um, proof to bear. And hopefully we've tried to do that over the years in our communities.
Were there any other questions or concerns regarding the HOA feedback?
That C one, um, that allows uh, alcohol sales too, right?
So, yes, so um, both neighborhood business and C one allow. In our code, it's like liquor sales or, you know, offsite consumption, so you know, a bottle or a six-pack or whatever. Um, but for onsite consumption, so an actual like bar, that um, requires a, a, another permit in neighborhood business. So they would have to go through the same process too, where. Residents within three hundred feet get notified that someone's made application. For a, a bar, an alcohol, a business or alcohol beverage establishment. And I come to y'all and then to the city council. So there, there's a couple of uses within neighborhood business that that applies to. But I kind of mentioned before, like, some of the uses. Like auto repair, that's just allowed by right and C one. You know, event centers, indoor entertainment kind of stuff. Restaurants with drive-throughs, um, theaters, um, private schools. All those are allowed without any additional approvals within C one.
I would say that while Scott is correct that those are uses that are allowed under C one, uh, just through. Economics, uh, we would be hard-pressed to prove to a business, had a, a drive-through use as example. This would be a good location. They, they want volumes and trips, they want to be close to major highways, so something like that wouldn't happen. Um, so I, I, again, I think it's, it's placement is going to deter, or it's gonna direct. The, the type of end use, it's going to, you know, focus on what the, what we're, we're desiring to. Create for the community versus having a, a place where there's even a dental clinic or uh, an office. This is, this would not be a, a good location for an office. They, they want visibility, they want to be near a major roadway.
That's all true, I just.
You're right, Scott, I got you.
Going neighborhood business helps. Prevent any of those externalities from potentially ever happening if it's on C one.
Okay, um, any other questions? Or Claire, do you need it? Okay. Alright, do we have a motion on the floor? To take action?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the C one.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Cardona to move the. Current use of the property from single family to like commercial C one. Is there a second? Is there a second motion? Is there a second motion? Uh, so Scott, the motion did not pass?
Is there a, a, another motion? Does someone want a motion for neighborhood business?
I would have put in a motion for neighborhood business.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to change the current land from zoning land from single family. To uh, neighborhood. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
So we have a second motion. Um, okay, so can we get? Okay, so can we get a tally of those that are all our roll call? For those that are all in favor or opposed?
And this is for the neighborhood business. Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
No.
And Commissioner Small?
Aye. So let the record reflect, there was Commissioner Meyer, yours was unknown, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Alright.
For neighborhood business.
Was someone else saying something, sorry?
I'm sorry, I was just saying thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Danny.
You have a video.
So in order for us to, let's move forward to agenda item number seven. Alright, for consideration, discussion and possible action on a rezoning request for lots eleven to twenty block ten, town of Maynor and being zero point six six acres more or less and being located along the two hundred block west Burton Street, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial C one to family, multifamily twenty five MF dot two.
And this was for the Housing Authority of Travis County for their small affordable senior housing that they wanted to construct.
Put a motion forward to approve agenda item number seven.
I second.
So it's been properly moved to approve agenda item number seven from light commercial to multifamily. Can we have a tally for those that oppose or all in favor or in favor?
True, Commissioner Hammerstein? Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Thanks.
Sorry, I had my mic muted.
I think I saw you like that, so.
Okay, Scott, you ready for us to move on to the next item? Agenda item number eight, consideration, discussion and possible action on a joint lot affidavit to join lots two and three, block eleven, town of Maynor, locally known as one oh nine East Murray Avenue. The owner is Eric and Rebecca Thompson and also applicants.
Sure, this is standard John Lot affidavit that we've done a couple of times. These properties are in between our water tower that's behind Sonic and I think Rosio's hair salon, that's at the corner of Lexington and Murray. That's small little yellow salon there. And they just, this, John Lot affidavits allow people to combine their properties for the purposes of building. And so if they, when they want to construct something on the property, they can basically build across the property line, so they don't have to go through an expensive replating process to create one lot. This affidavit for us allows them to construct it as if it were one lot, so the setbacks get moved. And so there's no kind of middle setback where the property line is. And so just, it makes it more developable and helps them.
I do have a question, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Hammerstein.
So the affidavit with the city, it does carry with the sale of the property, right, like a final plat?
Yeah, we record these and so they're in the the property record.
Okay.
Yes, that was going to be my question because I also saw that that those lots have been up for sale off and on for a while now, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Put a motion forward to approve agenda item number eight.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you, we have a first and second motion to join the two lots affidavit on two and three for block eleven. Can we get a tally of those that are favor or opposed?
Commissioner Hammerstein? Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our last agenda item, agenda item number nine, consideration, discussion and possible action on a final plat for Maynor Heights Phase One, Section One, on one hundred ninety one lots on one hundred and ten point five two acres more or less and being located near the intersection of Boys D Arc Road and Tower Road, Maynor, Texas.
Sure, so this plat, it's been approved by engineers, so we are recommending approval of it. The only interesting thing about this plat, which is new and doesn't normally come up, is there's that letter at the end of the backup where there there's a Manville line that needs to be inactive prior to this plat being recorded. And so it's meets all of our requirements, it went through legal for y'all to approve it, but we're just going to hold on to it until that, until that easement is figured out with Manville and they're they're working on it currently, it's something that's projected to take a while. And, you know, the the plats are good for two years anyways after they're approved to be recorded, so not that they're going to take that long, I mean, you could probably go out there and see it, like the streets are paved, they're D R Horton, there there'll be the builder out there, they're already ramping up to want to start getting house permits, so they're not going to let this linger. But I was just pointing that out, that this plat can be approved, but it won't be recorded just yet.
Looks like there's a lot of engineer notes or strike throughs.
Yeah, this plat has been around since like twenty eighteen, so. A lot of it had to do with these easements and getting it to a point where legal was comfortable and we had a sufficient agreement with them on how to handle it.
Yeah, y'all have been working, it looks.
Here's an eagle hat, yes.
Pages and pages. I'll put a motion forward to approve agenda item number nine.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved to approve agenda item number nine. Scott, please do the tally for us.
Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small?
Okay, so that is the end of our regular agenda items. And so we'll call for adjournment of the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Alright, alright, thank you everyone, so we'll go ahead.
Let me say a quick word on that. I don't really need to, but it's in there. Commissioner Hammerstein?
Aye.
Commissioner Rowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardona?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Small? Alright, thank you all very much.
Alright, thank you everyone, have a good happy day.
Thank you.
How great to meet you.
Bye.
Bye bye.